Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's study session. It's six o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. And I believe the first order of business is the Finance Director, or Larry, or Kevin, or Dave.
Dave.
Or Dave.
Do you want to start? Mike might pick up the...
Airport Operations and Financial Overview.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a brief introduction. I know that we've listed both the Finance Director and Kevin Lewis and Dave Refner will be taking the lead on this presentation tonight. Really, it's a bit of an overview of the history of the airport, but more importantly, to outline the financing strategies for the airport and ultimately, just the financial overview. We're doing this as a bit of a foundation to the April 13 budget retreat that the Mayor Council will be participating in. We thought it would be good information. I do want the council to know that while we have tried, we typically try to spend 30 minutes on each of these topics. If you need a little more time, I'm not sure that the strategic plan that I'll be presenting next will need the full 30 minutes. So I'd prefer that we get through this and then we'll move to the next item.
Thank you, Larry.
Yeah, and because we have 27 slides, just, you know, a minute per slide, and I don't think we can move quite that fast, but we'll do the best we can.
You could do less slides.
And for those that may not know, David Refner is our Airport Manager, and if you've not met him, here he is. So he's going to take lead on these slides. I'll be providing comment. And then Angel and Roberta are in the back, and if we need any additional detail that's not provided in the presentation, they can provide that information if we need it. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Great to see you tonight. Thanks for letting me come present to you. This is the Airport Operations Fund presentation for you all. We're going to start off with a little bit of airport history, just to touch base on how the airport came to be, how the city acquired the airport, and kind of where it is today. So it was built in the World War II area, era, as a training base. It was Casa Grande Auxiliary Number Three. Williams Field was the main Air Force base, and they did training out of Casa Grande. After the war, it was designated to the City of Casa Grande to keep up and operate from that point forward. Virgil Coing, he held the lease for the airfield for many years, and he ran a crop dusting operation out of there. He also conducted T-41 training for the US Air Force, and there's some pictures there of areas of the airport that you can still see today.
Our parts is in the 241 field, about 30 miles from base.
The airplane is...
Way out of Boone Drive, the center of the highway. Everybody can make their own S-100 out there, and the way to the home, we hope that I don't know.
So the airport was always sort of out there in the middle of nowhere. It still is today compared to some of the Phoenix area airports, and it was used for training. The airport today is still used for training and continues to be maintained as a training airport for the FAA and the Phoenix area. It's owned and operated by the City of Casa Grande. It has one runway, 5,200 feet long, and a full parallel taxiway. It's still heavily used for flight training, and it's because mainly our ILS, our instrument landing system. It's a unique aspect of the Casa Grande Airport that most airports don't have, and ours, the only reason we really still have it and it's maintained by the FAA is to support flight training in the area. The airport is 640 acres of airport property. That's a aeronautical use airport property. And up next to the airport, there's the Donovan Kramer Airport Industrial Park, another unique aspect of the Casa Grande Airport. It has an FAA-approved Through the Fence Operations Agreement, so folks can buy property next to the airport and have taxiway access to the airfield. It has 57 acres available still today, and as those lots sell, we'll go into more detail later, but those, the sale of those lots, the money comes back to the airport for revenue so that we can do projects, maintenance projects, development projects, to help grow the airfield. So the airport property, you can see there on the colorful map, that's a land use map, so it has the various aspects of aeronautical use you'll see on airports. And then next to that, we have the Donovan Kramer Industrial Park. Those are the remaining lots that we hope to sell soon, and a portion of those sales will come back to the airfield for development. So we do a lot of planning for development at the airport, and some of you are involved in that now. We're currently in a master plan process to update the airport's master plan, and that's really the big overall picture for the airport. It's a 10-year plan. We do forecasts actually out to 30 years while we're doing this plan, but we're looking for a 10-year development plan, things that we can do to improve and prepare for the future of the airport. So we'll utilize forecasts, aircraft type, numbers of operations at the airfield, to try to figure out how we want to develop moving forward. Do we need more ramp space? Do we need more hangars? Do we need to extend the runway? All of these will be looked at in the airport master plan process, and we'll also look at the airport layout plan. The airport layout plan is the actual drawing set as part of the master plan that we develop, and any piece of development that we move forward with, whether it's funded by the city alone or through a grant, it has to be listed on the airport layout plan before we can proceed. The airport layout plan is not something that we update every 10 years. We can actually update that along the way. So if we have a new project, say we have a huge commercial operator wants to come in and build on the airfield, we can submit that as an ALP update, and we can move forward with the project once it's accepted onto the plan. The acceptance into the plan is a pretty straightforward process. They're really just looking to make sure that it's aeronautical use and that it's going to benefit the airfield in some way, shape, or form. With the airport layout plan and the airport layout plan, we developed the Airport Capital Improvement Program. What that is, is a list of projects that are grant-eligible so that we can apply for grants to move forward with those projects. Sometimes they're maintenance projects, if we need to do a mill and overlay, or a crack seal and seal coat on the runway, things like that will be part of that plan. Also, new development will go into that plan, so any future hangars, runway extensions, ramp extensions, new terminal buildings, even a tower, if we're ready to do something like that, will be involved in that capital improvement program.
And if I could just point out that the Airport Capital Improvement Project List is not always the same as the Public Works Airport Capital Improvement Project List. It'll also, the Public Works Project List will have projects that aren't grant-eligible, and you'll see some of those things on our budget requests. Last year, for instance, we had the Cooking Hood project for our cafeteria area that we're currently wrapping up. So those types of projects wouldn't be on the grant-funded list, so just wanted to point that difference out.
Yeah, and that's correct. A lot of our local projects will develop our own CIP list internally for the airport, but big-picture airport operations, critical flight area projects are going to be on the Airport Capital Improvement Program, and those would all be grant-eligible projects. So in 2019 was actually the year they looked at, but ADOT did an economic impact study for the state. It's a very big-picture document. Not a lot of detail went into individual airports, but they did reach out to us, and we reached out to many people who utilize our airport to look at the economic impact of the Casa Grande Airport. They looked at on-airport activities, visitor spending, and indirect, and indirect impacts. And so these are some really big numbers in here, and, but it's good to have in our pocket. It's a great study. There's a lot more information on the ADOT website if you're interested to take a look at it. But for the Casa Grande Airport, on-airport activity, the impact was 6.2 million. Visitor spending generated was 6 million, and the indirect-induced impact was 12.2 million. That's a huge impact, and it really goes to show how the airport is an economic driver for the community. The purpose of this study was not only to look at the big picture for the state, but to give the municipalities something to look at so they could see the impact that theirs, that their airports are having on their community. Sometimes it's hard to see, especially as we go through budget processes and things like that, and we're asking for funds to do projects. The state and the FAA have their own jurisdictions, but the municipal jurisdictions are sometimes a little more difficult, and so this really helps with that, and that there's more information than the document and at this website provided here. They also looked at number of jobs, earnings, and economic activity or output of the airport. And so for Casa Grande, it came back with 196 jobs. Now, that doesn't mean on the airport itself, but it could be jobs anybody who uses the airfield, so if they're shipping and it's passing through the airport, or if a company is flying their executives in to utilize the airport, or they're flying in to go visit a work site in Pinal County, those all got counted in this process. Earnings were $8,652,000, and economic activity was $24,221,000. So now we want to talk a little bit about the grant programs. This is specifically the ADOT Grant Program. So there's the ADOT Grants, and then there's the FAA Grants. They're two different funds, and they're generated by different revenue sources. So the State Aviation Fund is where the state gets their grant programs, and it's comprised of the Flight Property Tax, Aircraft Loot Tax, Aviation Fuel Tax, and then it's distributed on three major categories: Design and Construction Projects, Planning Projects, and Land Acquisition Projects. So that's really, that really sums up what the state is eligible for to give grant money to. So when we have projects that fall under these, which we did this year, and the state was willing to give us some projects, that was really nice. Underplanning, we got our Airport Master Plan. We also got an Airport Drainage Study and Plan. We're also doing a little bit of construction, so we're going to do some cleanup on the runway and the parallel taxiway. One is a program, the other is a grant, and we look forward to working with ADOT in future years to continue that working relationship so we can keep the airport in good shape. So the, like I was saying, there are ADOT Grants. The Airport Pavement Management System, that's what we're doing the project for Taxiway B on. It's really a program where the state pays 100% of the design, and then the construction portion, we match 10% of the construction cost. So them covering 100% of the design covers about 30% of the total project, and then we're only responsible for about 10% of the construction costs. They handle everything, so all the construction management, all the planning, all the coordinating, staging of equipment, we really, we just, we match our funds, and the project moves forward with the state. So that's a really nice program. I do want to add, not many states have this available. ADOT is one of the last ones who does have it. Most states don't have a State Aviation Fund, the money from ticket sales that their international airports goes into to help the smaller airports like Casa Grande. So we're really lucky to have the state grant programs, and the FAA is very grateful because the state can pick up some of those projects, and the FAA doesn't have to fund 100% of airport projects in Arizona. So now we'll talk a little about the FAA Grant Programs. There's the Airport Improvement Program, or AIP, that has three different categories. There's the Entitlement Fund category, where the Casa Grande Airport specifically, we accrue $150,000 annually that goes into this fund, and we can bank that money to build up the fund to do a larger project, and it, the capacity on it is 600,000. So we can bank the 150 for a few years and not do a project, to build it up to 600, and then do a larger project if that's what we choose, or we can split it up and we can spend 150,000 a year, and that's what's dedicated to us. There's also discretionary funds. That's the grant program we would apply to, and it's subject to acceptance and approval of a grant application. That's something like if we were, if we were to do like a runway reconstruction, which would be closer to $8, $10 million, obviously, our entitlement funds would not cover that, so we'd be, we would be asking for additional funds. We'd have to justify that, and we would be competing for those funds nationally, not just here in Arizona. So the FAA is a national organization, so when they do discretionary funds, we have to justify and compete with all the airports across the country. So that's a little more difficult to get, but it's not impossible, and it's definitely something we should tap into in the future. They have supplemental discretionary funds where they derive the monies from the Federal General Fund. That gets even more difficult to acquire, but these are all the different programs. There's several tiers that we can get. One, we're just handed the 150,000 a year that we can use for anything that's grant-approved, and then the discretionary, we can apply for larger projects, and supplemental, which would fill the gap for anything in between.
I think this would be a good time to mention that since 2015, while we've been dealing with the Part 16 Challenge with the FAA and the airport with what it has to do with skydiving, we've not been eligible for grants, and so this discretionary fund has been sitting at that $600,000 level, and we've not been able to tap into it. So those funds that are eligible to come to us have been going to other airports. So we're trying to wrap up the issue with the FAA and try and get back those grant-eligibilities so that we can take advantage of these funds. Now, you're probably sitting there going, well, you just talked about ADOT funds that we're getting this year. ADOT has made a decision to allow us to get their funds this year prior to us completing the FAA process. So they basically linked their decision from the point that we had our conditional approval in place, they started helping us fund our projects again. So I just wanted to point that out, and it goes for all federal funds at this point.
So there's one more new program this year, BIL, Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, which is new, and it's a five-year program. It's a one-generation investment in America's transportation network, including airports. A lot of it went into towers and larger airports, but we did, we were able to tap into the, one, one aspect of it. So 25 billion of it was for airport infrastructure, I'm sorry, 15 billion was for airport infrastructure that we were able to tap into. We are going to get 159,000 a year for the next five years, and we can bank that up to 795,000 over that five years. Or we can expend it, you know, every year along the way, but that's already dedicated to us, so similar to entitlement funds, but it's in addition to that. So a lot of good things. Federal government's looking to improve the infrastructure on airports and improve the airspace systems.
And, and just to point out, what we're trying to do is work out a deal where we're actually able to bank those funds now, even though we're not grant-eligible. Now, we wouldn't be able to spend them in the future, but we're hoping we can secure that, and we are in those discussions with the FAA right now.
So you'll notice on the side, these are a much smaller match. It's a different program. It's new, and ADOT has announced that they're going to match all of the cities' matches. So the cities' match portion on these grants will only be 4.47%. So that's great. It's great news, and it was great that ADOT stepped in and is helping us out as well. So Fund 205 is the Airport Operations Fund. Our expenses are all operational. The revenue comes from two primary sources, fuel sales and rentals. Revenue is generated, cover operational expenses. Outside funding sources necessary, are necessary to fund all capital. So the airport currently, if you look at these charts, you can see the operations is mostly comprised of materials and supplies, so it's day-to-day operations. We have 17% for personnel expense, 5% for capital outlay, and then we have 15% for contractual services. Our revenue is really two primary sources, I said. 79% is fuel sales and rentals and sale of city properties, 21%. The fund balance is carried forward, and the airport currently runs a negative balance. It rides around 450,000 each year. It goes up and down a little bit here and there, but the airport, over the past five years, has generated minimal amounts of revenue. It's, it's basically at the break, break-even point. What revenue we do make gets applied to that fund balance, so it starts to dig, dig its way out, but it's a very slow dig to get out from under that. But the fund is no, it's not going in negative. The airport's basically become self-sufficient on the operations level. So Fund 405 is the Airport Grants Fund, or the Airport CIP Fund. Both city CIPs and, and grants would go into this fund for funding purposes, and as we expend the money, we set up accounts in these funds. So the fund is comprised of local CIP projects and grant projects. It also includes airport industrial park lot sales. So when we sell an airport industrial park lot, a portion of that sale comes back to the airport, like we talked about, and it helps us to develop a sort of fund that we can look at when we go to do development projects. A lot of that, we, I would push forward to match grants, to match our 10%, and we can go a lot further with grants than we would spending it all doing 100% city funds, I mean, city projects. And then the expenditures are mostly capital outlay and then the contractual services for like our, our consultants we utilized for project management, construction management, So Airport Capital Projects are matched by funding through the General Fund. This is where the, the city really chips in to help the airport out, because operationally, we can break even, but when it comes to CIP projects and those big expenses, the airport does need a little bit of help on the capital end. Projects are not typically eligible for state and federal grants, are currently funded by non-airport sources. So you'll see, this is a, the pie chart shows our current projects that are underway. So we have the Through the Fence Taxiway. That's a city-funded-only project that we're doing. It's not grant-eligible because it's considered to be exclusive use, so the city's funding 100% of that project, so that's where this fund would be diminished on a project like that, whereas the other one, the Airport Master Plan, we're only going to pay 10% of that total project cost, so it's a lot better way to utilize these monies in this fund. We're also utilizing this fund to do the EA on the parachute drop zone. That's a city-only funded project. So this fund is just about split in half right now to match grants and then to do And that's it for the presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer your questions.
Mr. Powell?
Go ahead, Mr. Powell.
Yeah. I, I just wanted to check, we've got a lot of pilots out in the audience to see if they've got any questions or if they're familiar with what's going on or whatever, so I thought this would be a good time to...
Why don't we let the council ask some questions, and I can open the floor if they would like to speak.
Whatever you want to do, Mayor.
Okay. Anyone? Yeah, Bob?
Been following the corrective action with the FAA pretty closely. Is the trigger to make us once again eligible for FAA funds, is, is the trigger for that, the full acceptance of the FAA on the corrective action?
That's correct. And that has to do with creating that new drop zone, which we're in the process of doing. We just wrapped up the environmental assessment of that property. It's now in review with the FAA. We have no idea how long that, that step's going to take, but that will be the next step that's needed before we can move forward with identifying that as our new drop zone.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt?
Thanks for the presentation. I think it's, it was eye-opening how much economic output and how much impact the airport has on, on the city, and we've said for so long that how valuable a piece of infrastructure, how valuable an asset that is, because I don't think we would have a lot of these big companies here today if they couldn't land their planes here, because I know a lot of the people come to visit on their own jets and their own big planes. And I was talking to Terry Emig yesterday about this, and he had this great quote, and I'm going to share it, Terry, if you don't mind. He says, "That 5,200 feet of runway connects Casa Grande to the rest of the world." And I'm like, that's a very good way to look at it, because it really allows us to have these big projects come into our, to our city. So I'm glad we're keeping with it, and just, like I said, to beat the drum on how much impact that airport has for our city, because it's an eye-opening number.
Well, we have seen a lot of jet traffic, and it has, it really increased our fuel sales on that end of the operation, to the point that we had to ask for additional budget authority because we spent everything that we had planned on spending for our fuel purchases to then resell. So we're way past our budget numbers and looking at our next year's budget numbers real closely.
All right. Don?
Well, and I've had the opportunity, Terry took me around, and Dave, you've taken me around, and I've been out there a number of times, and I, I'm just so impressed by the activities that we have, and how many people actually show up, out there for different events, so I think you guys have done a great job. I think it was slide 22 or 23 I had a question about, I think you had mentioned the 79%, and I noticed, if I, if I think that's right, where on the, the bottom one where it says fines, 0%, just out of curiosity, what type of fines would go under that category? Fines on us or to our folks that are out there leasing?
No, this would be, this would be fines to our, to like our tenants for like payments due, things like that.
That's okay. I just want to make sure.
It's on the revenue side, so it'd be something that the airport fined to somebody else, and it's at 0%.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Just, just, just a comment from me, and, you know, obviously, I think most of the council realizes how important the airport is. We, I think we support the airport. We support capital improvement projects. Obviously, they need to be vetted and come through the process, and I think we understand that it's outside the operating expense of the airport, so I don't think that should be an issue in the future, at least not with the current council. And, you know, because I know we're working on the master plan now, and I think that hopefully that master plan will have some long-range opportunities to, I think, expand the airport, expand the runway, take a look at some of the water issues we've got out there. There's a lot of things, obviously, we need to look at, but I think that, you know, it's, it's important. I think we need to move forward with that, so it's just, you know, one guy's opinion, so. Mr. Powell?
Would, would we, during this, look at extending the runways and, and doing things to be able to take heavier airplanes that land on our airport, especially during the summer?
Yeah, that's one aspect we will look at, and that goes in the aircraft category. So if heavier aircraft are beginning to use the airport, we'll look at runway length. That larger category comes with longer and stronger asphalt. We'd be looking at lengthening and strengthening the asphalt if we went that route, and we're really, we're going to concentrate on the forecasts and the diversity of aircraft to get to that point. That's going to be kind of on the tail end of projects if we get there, same as like a aircraft, I'm sorry, yeah, airplane control tower.
Just to follow that up, the wash that goes on the west end of it, will that be bridged or done away with, or how will that, will you need that area to complete your, your airport?
That, that's kind of the golden question. They, they looked at that in the 2009 Airport Master Plan, and at that time, they had opted to reroute the drainage. When we really dug into that project, it was going to be enormous cost to reroute the drainage, so bridging makes a little more sense, but it, it also gets compliment, complicated environmentally to bridge over that drainage. So it's, it's a great question. I don't have the answers. We're going to plan for a future runway extension if it's, if it's in our forecast, and then when we get to the, the design phase, the engineers will, they have their work cut out for them, that's for sure.
We've had a lot of industrial people watching Casa Grande, wanting to come in and, and see what we've got to offer, and that's why I was what, you know, wondering what we could handle on those that would come in as a corporate plane. If you told me exactly, I wouldn't understand anyway.
Hey, Dave, Dave, I know, I think a water study is part of that, part of the grant that we're getting also?
Yeah, so there's a drainage study and drainage master plan. We're getting ready to kick that off, council just approved that, I think, last month, and so we're in the cure period, and then we'll get going on that.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, so I am, I, I do have the option to open the floor, so if...
All right, so I am, I, I do have the option to open the floor, so if there's anyone here who would like to ask a question or, and/or make a comment, I will open the floor to comments, but please keep your comments to three minutes and appreciate that. Give us your name and your address. Is there anybody? Okay. Seeing none, then I'll close the floor and we'll move to the next agenda item. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the update. Larry, it's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to spend just a few minutes with the proposed or draft version, what I would consider to be the, hopefully, close to the final draft of the City of Casa Grande Strategic Plan. And as a bit of a reminder for those that may not have watched previous meeting, previous meetings that we've had this discussion, the mayor and council adopted a strategic plan in 2018. We had a revision in 2020 and ultimately have elected to revisit the strategic plan in 2022. And I, I think that for the mayor and council and, and the staff that's been actually implementing the strategic plan, we've really tried to give ourselves a little bit of a, of a, of a window, perhaps a five-year window, as we've developed the focus areas and goals and action items. But we've, we've really narrowed that down to a two-year window as we, as we work through these various action steps. And, and ultimately, the purpose for that is finding some level of alignment that can in fact be implemented with an annual budget process, rather than putting together a, a plan that is more long-term, that sits on a shelf. We've really tried to use this document as, as an action, an action document. And so several months ago, the mayor and council met to, to get an update on the strategic plan, which staff provided, and we ultimately engaged on, on a variety of focus areas as well as goals and action items. And staff attempted to modify some of the focus areas that the mayor and council has, have established for the organization and presented those approximately a month ago. And so now we find ourself at a position where we're roughly two weeks away from our budget retreat. And what I'm hopeful for tonight is just to engage the council on the, on the document that was included in your council packet. And Stephen's got that pulled up as well on the slide if we need to work through those. I believe council member Huddleston had a very good point. We were focused, we were really identifying the focus areas that evening and, and the point that he made was, can we see the rest of the, the body? Can we, can you add some of these things and see whether, you know, these goals and objectives and action items and see if they make more, more sense, more alignment? And, and at least from that particular meeting, the, the study session, the, the item that we were really having the majority of the dialogue on had to do with a move from our quality of life focus area. And quality of life has been very, very broad, as the, as the council identified in, in our, in our strategic planning retreat. So staff has attempted to come up with some recommendations. And I know that as we did that and, and really began to outline a change to perhaps a focus area of community enhancement and community fulfillment. Fulfillment seemed to be a word that many of us were attempting to really kind of grasp in the context of our strategic plan. And so as we went back to the drawing board following our last study session, we, we did some brainstorming and came up with community connection. I, I don't know if that resonates anymore with this mayor and council, but ultimately, as you can see by the, by the document, what we're attempting to do is really develop focus areas that number one, are, are every one of these items in community connection and community enhancement are in my mind, quality of life type projects or action items. But I, I, at least my belief is that the community connection focus area really is about how we're going to engage our community and the, and the mechanisms that we're going to, and tools that we're going to utilize. And community enhancement becomes the actual physical project that will be done. The, the quality of life improvements or, or, or actual capital projects that we, we have planned or specific goals. And so I know that I've had, I've had some dialogue with a couple of you related to, to the version that I sent out. You've given me some, some additional modifications that I intend to make in the next couple of days or before the April 13th meeting, but I wanted to take an opportunity to engage council one last time and get your viewpoint, number one, on those focus area terminology. And if there's anything in the goals and, and action items that you would like to discuss tonight, I'd be happy to do so. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll pause and entertain any comments or questions.
Well, you have my comments already. Anyone else?
For the record, the mayor agreed that community connection is probably a better terminology than, than community fulfillment. So if we can start there, perhaps if, if that, if that is resonating and feeling like more of a focus area, we can certainly solidify that. The, I guess the, the other comment that I would make, and the mayor and I did have a chance to talk about this earlier today, that has to do with the education and workforce and, and the, just to, just to jog everyone's memory, it used to be education and workforce development and there's certainly nothing wrong with that as a focus area. It makes perfect sense to me. I, I think when we were having the dialogue at the retreat, it was, there, there's been a lot of work that has, has been done out of this organization, really through collaborative efforts with the educational system and the various workforce types of entities and agencies. And, and when I, when we, when we actually created the word advancement or added the word advancement, it was really to, to, to indicate to the community that we feel that we've got some good foundation that we've established and advancement is, that we'd like to take the next step and really begin to focus on implementation. And so, but as I told the mayor, I'm comfortable with development, but it would be the pleasure of the council if, if you're, if you would prefer advancement over development.
Yeah, I, I don't have heartburn either way, Larry.
Okay.
It just, you know, a lot of our communication's been education workforce development, but that doesn't mean we can't change it, so. Maybe if everybody's okay with advancement, I'm okay with it.
Good.
All right, so from the focus areas, if we can just spend, I'm not going to go through every one of these goals, but you can see that some of them are similar to the original goals that were established. Some of them are revisions that were actually established in 2020 and we've, we've really tried to put a focus on, on what I consider to be some of the next phases of our goals. And, and you'll see that as we have shifted to financial stability and sustainability, we're really beginning to take a, a more stronger look in, in, in building what I consider to be a very stable financial condition for the organization, which we've, which we've enjoyed for decades. But you'll be, you'll see that we've added items such as develop a sustainable five-year capital improvement program and financing plan. I think that the council recognizes that with the growth that we've been experiencing, there's a need for us to, to number one, align a plan that, and, and a list of projects with a financing source. It's driven the discussion of the geo-bonds and the like, so I'll be adding some information related to those projects in that particular category. But, and there's a stronger focus on this cultural alignment. The mayor and council is aware that we've been going through organizational culture initiative. That is, we are now, we're, we've really spent the last six months focusing on internal, which is, which we'll have a heavy emphasis in, but we also want to begin to align our external relationships from the cultural map that we're creating. And, and ultimately, we'll create a plan that will start implementation. So you begin to see some new goals that were established around that as well. I've also spent a little bit of time really focused on events and arts. Again, I know those are quality life items, but you'll see some new activities that we've listed in those particular categories. So is there, are there any of these goals that the mayor and council would like to discuss or any comments that you might have this evening on the goals? Which, which would be the heavy, heavy bulleted, bolded items? If there's, if there's nothing on the goals, then I'll move on to the action items. And again, we're looking at a two-year window. And so fiscal year '23 is, is really very populated to align with the budget that the mayor and council is going to get presented on the 13th of, of April. I've started to where we have had what I consider to be multiple-year types of activities. You'll see that we've listed fiscal year '24. But I think the most important element that I want to stress this evening, and I know the mayor and council is aware of this, that we are really using our 2030 general plan and aligning the goals and objectives that were approved in that document that were created by our stakeholders group, the mayor and council, and, and, and so openly received. You'll, you begin to see a whole lot of commonality between the goals that are, and I know, I recognize that's a 10-year window and we're, so we've, as a staff, we have gone through and exercised to narrow that down into smaller multi-year timeframes. And so you're beginning to see a lot more of those action items that align with the 2030 general plan as well.
Yeah, Larry, and you and I talked about this earlier today, but you know, just adding a little bit potentially about the geo-bonds.
Yes.
Maybe something to add in there. And then also in 2024, under elimination of our blight, is to have a similar line about developing an all boulevard corridor plan versus just the Florence Boulevard corridor And then, and then just adding to our water demand management, that 15% our goal, 15% goal, that's consistent with our general plan. Maybe adding some comments about Drive 48 too for CIC.
Absolutely. So if, if the mayor and council has any additional comments as you review the document again, don't hesitate to send me an email and I will look to incorporate these. Ultimately, the plan will be that you'll see these again at the budget retreat. There's no action this evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is really just a discussion topic. And so we will get this finalized and get it ready for, for our next steps in the budget process.
And if you all have some comments between now and, you know, try and do it by the end of the week, so Larry can kind of wrap this up. Lisa?
And I just have a comment. Larry, just to you and your staff and, and the council, I've been on the city council for 11, 12 years now and I know this is something that was really important to me starting and it just, previous management didn't really take it as serious and think it was necessary, but I just think it has just been such a great guideline for all of us and a tool that, just a roadmap and direction. And I think, I hope it helps all of you as much as it helps us. We all get so busy and have so many things in our minds, so at least we kind of focus on what's important and where we want to take the city. So I really, really appreciate your commitment and staff. I'm sure it's a headache, but you could have easily done this and put it on, not put it on a shelf, you would have never put it on a shelf, but, but you, you all have taken it very serious. And, and I just, you know, as, as far as how, you know, I mean, it's something that's really important to me that I look at and I think it's good that we revisit it every year and tweak it. And I just think it helps all of us move the city of where we think is, is important. So thank you very much for this.
Well said, Lisa. Thank you.
And you know, just, I'm sorry, Matt.
Go ahead, Matt.
And just to piggyback on what Lisa said, I think that in looking at this, for those people that are not involved on a day-to-day basis or, you know, the way we're looking at it as a council, that, you know, the average citizen can look at this and understand what we're trying to accomplish. And for me, that's really important because if they don't know what we're doing on their behalf, then it, it really needs to be looked at, so.
Matt?
And then to echo those two, but one really neat thing is every budget item that comes before us at the meeting is tied to the general plan somehow, and I like how the staff does that, because that way we can say it's going towards our goals and, you know, we're doing it. And then all of these action items in here, I mean, it's not just a, a vision document, it's actionable items, so good job with that.
Dito. Bob?
Since everyone's commenting on strategic planning, I was fortunate enough to go through some strategic planning training at one time. And one of the, one of the best comments or quotes that I got out of that was that it helps everyone in the organization to all push in the same direction. And I think that's very appropriate for our council. We all seem to participate in this, but we buy into it and I think we all have the same focus and that's quite valuable.
Agreed. Good. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I just, just one point, based on the comments that were made, it's important for our community and our residents to understand that not every project that gets approved is on this action item list. It typically is a large, the larger projects, otherwise this would be a 35-page document. But again, I, you know, the message that I received from the mayor and council very early on in my tenure is, let's begin, we seem to go through a lot of planning and developing strategic plans for various, in various departments. Let's try to find some alignment. And I, and I'm hopeful that when our residents, if they're, if they're interested in this, begin to go and look, they'll find that while it may not always be articulated in this strategic planning document, it may be in the general plan, it may be in our economic development strategic plan, there's, there's as much alignment, at least in my mind, that I've seen in any organization in 31 years to, to planning documents. And, and to Councilwoman Fitzgibbon's point, I can assure you that the staff is, is very engaged in this process and they use this as they develop their budgets annually. And, and again, I think that's an important component for implementation.
Excellent. All right. If you get an unanimous thank you on that one. Thank you, Larry. And we are at 6:45. We'll stand adjourned for 15 minutes. We'll start at 7 o'clock.